Ayana, whenever you're ready.
Ayana, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Welcome to the November 4th meeting of the Everett Planning Commission. Ayana, would you please call the role?
Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Oh, Commissioner Shelby.
Also here.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Rutledge.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shelby, would you read the land acknowledgement, please?
Yes, the Planning Commission wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shahobsh people and their successors, the Tilalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories and voices to form a just and more equitable society.
Thank you. We'll now take care of the meeting minutes from October 7th. Were there any corrections to the meeting minutes? Other than the omission of Commissioner Rutledge, which we've already mentioned that. Okay, seeing no corrections, any objection to the minutes being approved as presented? Okay, then without objection, the meeting minutes from October 7th are approved. Just a note regarding the meeting minutes. They have gone to a more brief format. For anyone who follows via the meeting minutes, there are transcripts available. If you look at our YouTube page, it does AI transcripts. And so if you feel that the meeting minutes aren't quite as robust as you'd like them to be, you can read the transcript on our YouTube page. We now have an opportunity for reports from commissioners, any reports today? Okay, then we will, oh, one additional thing. We do have a hard stop today at 7:30. So we'll, we'll be watching the clock to ensure that we meet that deadline. And with that, we'll turn it over. Thank you.
Sure thing. Good evening, Chair Chatters. Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm York Stevens, watch planning director. To my right is Teddy Holbrook, environmental planner. We'll be walking through the complete draft of the critical areas. Regulations periodic update today, but first a couple staff comments. Housekeeping ordinance we sent for state agency review. We're in the 45 day state agency review period. As mentioned in the last meeting or two, we were still working on a couple of tweaks to the inclusionary housing provisions. And do expect to bring that back to you in two weeks on November 18th for a minor adjustment to the resolution and recommendation that you passed a couple of meetings ago on the inclusionary zoning. We also, General Code is the consultant that does the online codification of our regulations. And they have been working through the massive Everett 2044 Development Regulations Ordinance that has not yet been posted to the webpage. We do have compiled PDF copies of it available on the planning department webpage. They did just get us back about 35 questions on that, which is about the number that I was expecting and the types of things numbering and some other things. Danielle Marshall, who's in the audience, our long range associate planner, has taken a first crack at going through all of those to see, answer their questions and get those things corrected. Some of those may find their way into the housekeeping ordinance as well. So whatever it is, we'll close the books on it after two weeks from today when we bring it back to you for what is expected to be a very brief, a brief return to that topic. Alice Anne has an update on manufactured housing communities that she's going to give. The other of the three code projects that we have in the works right now.
So.
Push the button.
That would be helpful. I'm not usually at this podium. I have been meeting with residents of manufactured homes over the last couple of months. On Thursday night, I was at the Silver Lake Neighborhood Association meeting where we had representatives from Silver Stores, Implyad, Lago, I believe, also there. And we have gotten basically unanimous support for creation of a manufactured housing community zone. And we will be moving forward with that and getting it to probably the first meeting in December for a conversation again. So you know what all the details of it are. And then at the beginning of the year with a public hearing on it. So, so far I've heard from one owner of one of the parks and he just wanted to make sure that they could replace one for one. And that's been it from the ownership side of it. So that's where we are on that process. But I did, letters went out to, excuse me, all the owners, all the managers, all the residents associations and the neighborhood associations explaining the entire process. So that's where we are on the outreach of that.
Thank you. Chair, we were talking before the meeting about December meetings. We'll see how tonight and November 18th is done. And we hear the request for a month off, which we've worked you very, very hard this year. So more to come on that in two weeks. Chair, you also mentioned the little project we did with revising the structure of our minutes. You should have a handout, which is what we followed. Jurassic Parliament is a, is an organization that supports local governments in things like Robert's Rules and Meeting Minutes. And they had a really handy set of suggestions for running efficient minutes. That is what we're following. That's what we plan to follow going forward. Let us know if there are any questions or any suggestions from you on that going forward. I believe that's all we have for staff comments today. Thank you.
Okay, we have one agenda item today, and that is the critical areas regulation. So we can jump right into that. Commissioner Shelby just reminded me that we should give an opportunity for public comment. So before we jump, I'm sorry, before we jump into the critical areas ordinance. Ayana, do we have anyone online who wishes to offer comment today?
We do not.
And did we receive anyone in the gallery with a sign in sheet who wishes to offer public comment?
Well, we'll, we'll get it later. Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and city of residence for the record. And if, if you could try to confine your comments to around three minutes, press the, there you go.
Oh, okay, sorry. Howard Bargreen, 28, 21, Rucker, Everett. I'm glad everyone was laughing at the start of the meeting. It means you're in a good mood. My request is that the Planning Commission take out a designation in the, of your critical area ordinance update. And there's a designation on my family property of unnamed creek. And I can go into a history, 81 year history of that property. I think we want to leave here by 6:30 or 8:30. So, and I'm sure there's a third, three minute limit. But basically, the only reason there's any more water on that property than your property, wherever you guys live, is because the city of Everett's water, first water tank number two and then water tank number four that was built in 1953 has been draining their, what comes out of their reservoir. All reservoirs leak onto my property or my family's property. And I've had numerous discussions over the years with the city. And so has my attorney and engineers. But basically, the city's doing a way better job of not putting water on my property. They built a new reservoir, Reservoir Two. And then now Reservoir Four is empty. So I'm looking forward to having the property like it was when I was a little kid, which was dry as a bone, just like probably where you guys live. And I really would like the Planning Commission or the planning department to consider taking out that designation. I'm willing, as some of you know, to do, make that happen in, in more expensive ways. But I think if you look at the situation and if you have a chance to talk to me and find out the history, it just makes sense. There's, all, all, all that water is, is rainwater and maybe a little bit of water from septic tanks, because we're the only place in the city that has septic tanks now. That's a whole nother story. I begged the city to change that. They could have when they built Reservoir Two this time, but we're unwilling to. But in any case, it's not a creek. And I can go into the history of it, but the only reason there's extra water there is because the city put it there. So please consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bargreen. Can I ask what, you said it was, the creek was named, what is the name of the, of the creek?
On, on Sharon, on, on, on the west side of Rucker Hill, in the new maps, there's two areas they just designate unnamed creeks.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Do we have any further comment? Folks signed up for comment?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bargreen, for providing that commentary. And with that, we'll turn it back over to you, York.
Thank you, Chair. This may be a good time. I'll follow up on those comments just a little bit. Mr. Bargreen, I'm sorry, was not able to forward the email to the Planning Commission, but we will get to that tomorrow so that you have, Mr. Bargreen asked that communication be forwarded to you. We'll get that into the record and get that before you. The city, it's important to clarify that this process is not changing the mapping or designation of any individual stream, wetland or other critical area. The process by which we regulate those and the process, the exceptions allowed uses, some of the management regulations are changing. But what is or is not a stream is not being addressed as part of this update. Over decades, we have compiled a general map of suspected or known critical areas that is refined continuously each time there's a development and there's a critical areas study that is done with field markings and very detailed measurements of where a wetland, for example, begins and ends. We take that information, we digitize it, we put it into the online maps. There will be a link a couple of slides from now to where you can find those maps. Those are considered suspected or, or, or possible critical areas. They are then further evaluated as part of any development application. And that is when we would make a determination of whether it met the legal thresholds for being a stream or a wetland or any other sort of critical area with the benefit of qualified professionals and a critical area report. The stream in question on that property was identified by USGS in a general study of the city of Everett a long time ago. So we matched that. We have refined the location of the, we'll call it a suspected stream or drainage based on very detailed topographical LIDAR data. That's the only change from what USGS had, had assumed. But whatever it is, when the time came for the application of the critical area regulations, we would confirm or modify our understanding of the presence of that. And then we would update our online publicly available mapping. So if anybody sees a critical area on the maps that we have, it is not a guarantee that that is a critical area exactly there. If you see that there is not a critical area mapped, it's the same thing. There may be a critical area there. We work on the best knowledge that we have. And that is gained at a site by site level slowly over time. Occasionally, we do full studies. There was a national wetland inventory, for example, in the eighties or something like that. But otherwise, it's done through individual site, usually through, associated with development. So we'll give a more direct answer to you, Mr. Bargreen, directly. We'll forward the email and any other conversations around that to the Planning Commission. So you have a window on that, too. I think after that, I can turn it over to Teddy.
All right. We got to quicken. Here we go. So, Commissioners, it was not a ghost. There was a draft published on October 31st, 2025 of the Critical Areas Ordinance. Everett Critical Area Regulations Periodic Update. That will be referenced through this presentation. But first, a quick recap of the last two meetings that we met to discuss this top, this topic. In September 16th, we discussed the background, what are critical areas? Where are they? Why protect them? And gave some regulatory framework. We also discussed the Critical Areas Ordinance update itself, discussing best available science and potential updates to the ordinance itself. And we briefly discussed next steps, including a public participation plan, the general timeline of adoption and some brief commission considerations at that time. The last meeting was October 7th, where we recapped the previous meeting before that. We also discussed how the code functions and how critical areas are regulated, including the mitigation sequencing hierarchy and some flexibilities in our existing code. We also briefly discussed some proposed code changes, including revisions, and really touched upon the reorganization of the chapter. To throw it back to the last two presentations, there are five different types of critical areas listed on this slide, which should be familiar to you. Of note, there are no critical aquifer recharge areas in the city of Everett. Then we discussed why we are protecting critical areas. It falls in generally two different categories. To protect ecological functions, which includes water quality, hydrologic functions and habitat functions, and also to protect the life and safety of our residents and to focus on avoidance and minimization of those areas. In addition to the previous slide, we also have to update, review and update our critical areas ordinance through the Growth Management Act. It requires us to. It requires no net loss of ecological functions and values, and it must be based on best available science. And it must give special consideration to preserve or enhance anadromous fisheries. We also briefly touched upon the functions of the critical area regulations itself, including the applicability of these regulations, when to require a review. We highlighted some exemptions, exceptions and allowable uses. And also, our goal is to set clear criteria and standards such as what constitutes a qualified professional. We want to make sure that we highlight the protection and assessment of functions and values of these areas and how to provide mitigation for unavoidable impacts. A key component of this is this mitigation sequencing hierarchy. We want to have applicants demonstrate that they go through these steps in this order to avoid, minimize, rectify, reduce, compensate and monitor impacts to critical areas. We also touched upon some flexibility in our existing critical areas ordinance and environmental regulations, highlighting exemptions, exceptions permitted and allowed uses, including reasonable use exceptions. We also provide for flexible buffer widths, including buffer averaging and buffer reduction with enhancement and implementation of protective measures. We also allow for mitigation banking and in lieu fee mitigation and transfer of development rights. So now on to the proposed code updates. This is meant more for an orientation to the materials that were, were provided to the commissioners. We included a memo which highlights several changes within the draft regulations in bulleted format. Exhibit A is a table of contents, proposed changes. And Exhibit B is the draft code amendments itself. The memo looks like this. The bullet, the bulleted points are those key highlights of the changes per article organized in that fashion. The general updates, again, we touched upon it the last presentation. It's a reorganization of chapter 19.37, where each critical area now has its own article, which we relocated several code sections into those articles for more emphasis and better organization of similar ideas. This is highlighted in Exhibit A. We provide four different tables for you. Table one is on the left of this slide. It's in order of the existing table of contents of 19.37. On the right is what is proposed as the new table of contents. You can see they're organized by introduction and Article One, Article Two and so forth. Table three of Exhibit A, on the left is the existing table of contents in the order it appears in the chapter currently. And on the right is the redistribution of the same text into the new proposed code sections. For example, if we pull out 19.37.030, which is critical area reports, professional qualifications and report content in the existing code. The code language that was in that code section is now redistributed into four different code sections, which is 120, 220, 320 and 520, which are those critical area reports, additional requirements for each type of critical area. It's nice that the numbers all lined up. Reversing that table that I just showed you, Table Three is Table Four, where we show on the left the proposed titles of the code sections in the order they appear. And on the right, the source of that text from the existing code. The commissioners probably know how to read a, well, assume they know how to read a strike through revised text. But this is for the general public out there. If you see a striked through section that is removed and the underline is added, for this specific example, the strike throughed code section point 070 is the existing. That is now being replaced with point 110 for the proposed code section. On the right is an example of what is included in the draft. The underlined text is, in this example, a new code section. The strike throughed code number is existing and relabeled to match the current organization. For this example, I have included the existing code section number. So it's more clear of where that code came from. Any strike throughed red text is existing code language that was removed. In this example, it's removed because right above it now is the exact same code text. It was in there twice. And the black text is existing code language that has been retained. Instead of having the entire draft appear in red, it has been accepted in Microsoft Word to now read as whatever that was in there. As it appears is now black text. So moving on to next steps, we have a timeline left to right to December and January on the right. Right now, we have published a review draft of the Critical Areas Draft Ordinance. We're hoping to receive comments next and receive Planning Commission recommendation. After that, go to city council briefings and then hopefully to adoption with revisions as necessary.
We do have some dates on the calendar. We'll keep those updated on the webpage, which you'll see a link to on the last page. That's where we'll put all drafts and other information on the project webpage. We're anticipating a final briefing discussion deliberations and public hearing with the Planning Commission on November 18th. Parks and Built Environment Committee. November 12th. We are going to visit the city councils Parks and Built Environment Committee for a briefing on a couple of different items. So it'll be a small touch point and update for them on that. And then December 3rd, full council briefing is anticipated. And then we may have a second reading later in December. There are a couple of meetings canceled because of holidays and there's a lot of other items, including budget going on. So may take until January before we have that second, that second reading. And then the city council public hearing in action. I think those are the dates. Yeah. And then there's the project website up there. We have a project email address that you can submit written comments. So this review draft is out there for everyone. We're, we're spreading the word widely. We have a couple of meetings scheduled already with two tribes and fish and wildlife. And we'd be happy to schedule briefings if there's any other organization that would like staff to come visit and talk through this with your organization. We can do that. So written comments and any requests or questions or any other interaction with us on this topic at cao@everettwa.gov. And then, of course, we'll have the formal public hearings to both the Planning Commission and the city council that folks can get involved in. That's what we have today. We were not going to get into content because you've only had the full package for a little bit. And we briefed the general topics at the last couple of meetings and thank you for the recap, Teddy. There were not many major changes from what we discussed at the last two meetings to this complete draft. But there is always a lot of nuances in the specific wording of the language. We think you'll, we'll all benefit from some comments from external agencies, organizations and the public. So hopefully we'll have all of that together at your next meeting in two weeks' time to see what input others have, give you some time to read it yourself. If you have questions between now and two weeks from now, because this is very dense material, feel free to reach out to us. We'd be happy to answer by email or jump on a, on a quick call with individual commissioners. If you have things that you'll want to discuss at the next meeting that you want us to be ready for, you can let us know. And that goes for anyone in the public, too. Please let us know any questions you have, comments or, or anything else.
Did anything arrive on your radar as far as something that will change an interpretation that is currently being utilized by the public?
Changing and interpret, so, and I remember at your last meeting, there was the question of how will this impact someone? That's a question in that area.
Yeah.
What are we doing here? Right?
And what is the meaning of life?
Yeah. That is a really hard question. We've been working on that since we last met. We've been focusing on getting the complete draft put together. There's a lot of it depends in there. You will see, for example, there are different stream buffer widths that may jump out. That's one of the, it's a tidy number. It's bigger. Most of our streams are fringed by wetlands and slopes. Wetlands tend to have larger buffers than the streams. Slopes extend the buffer up the slope, which typically overwhelms that stream buffer. We are going through the city parcel by parcel. And I don't know that we have found anywhere that really makes a difference. So even though the stream buffers are increasing 50% maybe in some cases, the practical effect on properties is going to be much less than that to zero.
Why do that?
Because the state, the best available science has evolved and we're required to update our code. The best available science applies throughout the state. And there are many, many streams in, in other places where that does make a difference. So in, in Everett, both being highly developed and seems like it'd be common for streams to be fringed by slopes and wetlands. But there are definitely places and forms where that doesn't occur. So we just have to match what the best available science says. You need 100 feet for 90% of pollution reduction. And that's the major. And that's the major function of the buffer of a, of a stream. But in our case, that doesn't have a much practical difference compared to the 50 feet. A lot of the nuances around existing development that is in what is a regulated buffer, whether it's the stream or the wetlands and what level of changes to a property will trigger compliance with different portions of this is something that we're looking hard at and may have some impacts in some places, but it is so site specific. Thinking of, you know, what, what is maybe 100 foot buffer, but most of a property is in that buffer and it has developed some of it with buildings, some of it with hardscape, some of it with lawn. Each of those three things interacts a little bit differently and most of these regulations run through a a professional and a critical area report, which summarizes the functions and values of the particular critical area and what are the mitigation measures or other measures that need to be applied to a project to mitigate for it. All of which is focused on the concept of no net loss and a goal of long-term net gain, but balancing that with property rights and pre-existing development and non-conformities and everything. So I would say the administration of non-conforming development within current critical area buffers is one to keep an eye on. Doesn't lend itself to a tidy, this is changing because every site is different and we're truing up the, the regulations in that, that's particularly the exemptions, exceptions and allowed uses sections. We're truing that up with state agency guidance as well as how we actually use the words in practice. But it is really tough to say, you know, it would be easy if it was like, you know, 10 feet more buffer everywhere, but it is really site specific. So I would just tell people broadly to pay attention to that just because with Everett's highly developed nature and we have a lot of non-conforming and that may not be exactly the right term, but it's basically that, a lot of non-conforming development. But it is the mitigation sequence that we went through, each development goes through that whole thing and may come up with different solutions on the backend depending on the applicant as well as us.
Additional questions on this topic, commissioners? Obviously, we have quite a bit of material to go through before the 18th.
That's why I'm also hoping that some of the professionals can help spot some things. They work with many jurisdictions and there are probably some key items that they're looking for and we've already gone through one round with the state agencies months ago. So now they'll have a chance to see in red line exactly what we've done and respond to that. They should flag if they think we've not gone far enough in any, in any way. And we'll send it to other organizations to do a similar level of review. From our perspective, we are hewing closely to the state guidance recommendations. We are following the comprehensive plan policies in the urban form element on critical areas. And we are doing our best to balance property rights, development opportunities and protections of critical areas, all of which I would not consider this to be a major shift.
Anything additional that you want to ask that when they come back on the 18th? Is there any questions that you anticipate wanting answers to that you want to give the planning team a heads up? Something that they may need to research and come back with additional information?
I don't know if it's possible. We kind of talked about some way of understanding that loss of building area to the work that we've done and to the number of houses that we needed and how it impacts, you know. Again, it's a priority, obviously, and I think we all care deeply about it, but it's a balancing act. So how does this balance in with the rest? Or are we doing it in a silo and everybody's just a free for all and fighting for their own? I also had a question, since I haven't read this, so I probably will have this all wrong. But the fee and lieu, it seems like just looking at the strike throughs that we had, there was an attempt to kind of have a program for fee and lieu. And I don't know of any history that it's been successful in Everett. I've never used it, never. Especially for private, maybe for some public jobs. There appears we've kind of stripped that back and made it very subjective. Was there a thought process behind that? Is it, I guess, is it not supported by the city as an option to adjust for property owners that have found wetlands or now have wetlands that maybe didn't have wetlands as an option to be able to work around that and to maintain our housing stock?
So the sections regarding mitigation banking and in lieu fee were written in a way that almost seemed personally to me that it was more focused on how to set up a mitigation bank or how to set up an in lieu fee program within the city, which is not necessarily the, the objective of those, those sections in our code. It's more like how can I use those, those programs? Those programs are set up by third-party organizations and they're certified through the federal and state government for use by private or public entities. So they can pay, like you said, in, in lieu fee, but it's a mitigation bank or an in, in, am I saying that right? In fee lieu? Credits essentially. They're, they're credit systems where you can pay into them and receive credits for potential impacts on a property. The, am I answering your question?
Well, I, historically, I've tried to use the credits in the city of Everett where I was consulted in on a kind of a nonprofit project. And it kind of came down, talking with the city, again, different, a different set of people working at the city at the point at that time. It just, there was really no, you had it as a program, but really there was no way that could actually ever be utilized. And so I'm seeing the strike through. Is this an attempt to like just acknowledge that and get rid of it? Or are we trying to make it so it actually could be a tool that can be used for development?
You're asking if you, we can set up a mitigation bank or an in lieu fee program in the city or use those credits in the city? Cause they, they are used in the city.
So it's not a pullback on the ability to do that. I think the language that we had is, as Teddy said, wasn't serving the function that it, that it should have. So we could call it extraneous code that we're deleting while the, that would be in the mitigation row of the mitigation sequencing. Once you get past avoid, reduce or minimize, and then you get to mitigate. That's where we do have provisions that you can, there's a mitigation bank Keller Farms in Redmond, where they've created a large wetland complex and then they sell the credits. So if you need to impact a buffer or a wetland here, then you basically you're transferring the wetland from that property where it's more appropriate for development and over to the newly created and highly functioning wetland over there. That's the process that I'm familiar with and there's nothing that we're doing that is changing the ability to do that process. I don't know if there's a different in lieu fee or something, but whatever it is, this shouldn't be changing that.
I understand your response. But I understand that, but I'm kind of interested, are we trying to, again, it seemed it was very difficult to use. I have the farm products and different products.
I think the goal of those sections specifically is to clean up and hopefully simplify how they can be used. And I hope that comes across.
And I don't perceive a change in what we have in this October 31st draft. Good, bad or indifferent. Is that, would you agree to the ability to use mitigation? And it is not very spelled out. It never is. It is just that word mitigate is what triggers all of that. You do have to demonstrate that you've passed avoid and minimize. So it can't be the first thing that you jump to. There's a wetland. Alright, let's fill it and, and move it to Redmond. But if that truly is the, the right answer, balancing the economics of it, the, the proposed and request, requested use of the property and other less impactful alternatives to it, then that is a, that that is a path.
Last call commissioners for anything you want to give the planning team a heads up on that we're going to want to discuss on the 18th?
Two points. It would be great if you could identify impacts to existing non-conforming developed properties. When we reconvene, maybe a couple of examples would be great. And then identify elements of state guidance you disagree with or you don't find applicable or constructive as relates to Everett. I think we often just, there's a, you know, someone says, well, state guidance or it's, it's the law. Fine, but I would also like to hear some critical commentary when it doesn't apply or shouldn't apply.
Can do.
Very, and then nitty gritty, page 31, line 14. What are heritage trees and where are they defined? Cause they're called out specifically. I mean, it's an addition, right? Same with evergreen trees, also not in definitions for chapter 19 that I can find. Yeah, that's it.
Remember to find them? Don't know that we have defined them. This is existing language. The
Well, so there's a, there's an existing language, which is also not defined. And then there's, it's used again for a new language and also not defined.
Yes, right. Yes, we attempted, so this is under E, which reads protection of significant trees within buffers in parentheses, heritage trees and evergreens at least eight inch diameter at breast height. And then we replaced if trees are identified on the outer edge of the buffer. And I think we probably flagged that as, well, what, there's always trees in the buffer, which trees? So that was just a clarification, but I think you raise a good point that leaving something that is undefined may not be the right way to go. Maybe if I remember us, did we talk about this and it was allowing for the potential future designation of heritage trees? But in the meantime, they just, there aren't any. Might have been with on.
Is the use of heritage trees a state requirement? That's just something we decided we thought was good to do.
Not necessarily a state requirement, but the preservation of trees was in the conflict.
Sure. But not specifically heritage trees and limiting certain trees. Yeah, we'd have to go back and look to see where this came from, if it's even possible to find. So yeah, we'll take a look and we'll see if there's anything obvious there and if not, maybe the time to add language about it is when we find our first heritage tree, not before.
There are other cities in Washington that talk about heritage trees. A lot of stuff on Google currently.
Yep, Seattle definitely does. I think that that gets back to the predictability of this ordinance. And so the extent that you can eliminate those terms that create some level of ambiguity would be helpful.
Do some research. Exactly the kind of feedback we need because there's a lot in here and we don't catch everything.
Okay, we already gave the last call. So with that, we have completed our agenda. And unless you have any final remarks, we're going to adjourn for the evening.